...forward and stop taking five steps back. It just makes me wonder. I know there's, there's, there's true feelings about personnel from previous administration. I, I get it. I, I do understand that. However, I know the citizens have a right to explain and come up and ask all the questions. But when it comes to the council members and the mayor, anybody sitting out there, the defensiveness really shows a lot. Because a question is asked, or the answer to that question might seem not clear, then it just turns the citizens, I think it would turn them off. And I know it's way too early and these people he's getting into. But I think, I think over time, things will begin to calm down. You know, things change, governments change, elections change things. You know, it's politics, it happens. At some point, everybody's gonna have to say, alright, let's move forward, we can still ask the hard questions. You may not like them, answered the questions, answer them, you don't like the answer, you can rebut it. But at what point do we just, you know, try to start moving forward a little bit? And that's, that's all I've got to say, it's, it's time for, you know, it's just time to move forward a bit somewhat. You know, we can, again, ask the hard questions, you wanna know something happened before, and if it's not totally clear, you know, you've just got, some of this stuff you gotta let it roll off your shoulder, it can't carry with you forever. So, I would just say, challenge the, not only the citizens, but politicians, that's a bad word to use, but, um, to, uh, look at this position that you're all in and say, okay, what can we do for Summerfield? This is where we're at today. I know where we were yesterday or last year, but we're not there anymore. Time to move forward. Thanks.
Anyone else get skipped? Okay, we'll go to item number nine, council manager, and/or attorney response to any comments. Anyone have anything that they'd like to share?
I'll talk a little bit if it's alright, I'll work backwards. Mr. Windelken, thank you, your comments are great, I believe that you're exactly right. You gotta ask the hard questions and keep moving forward. And man, by the way, let me thank you for all the help that you've done here in Summerfield, because you really went above and beyond. Uh, as soon as there was a staffing issue, you jumped in there right away, I think you were one of the folks there early on, isn't that right, Hupton? Is it not yet?
Yes.
Yeah? So, thank you for that. Wanna be a little bit careful with, uh, Ms. Clay and Ms. Kaplan. I know those are both John Doggett's, Councilman Doggett's, uh, family members, and so I don't wanna say anything disrespectful regardless, but I'm gonna be extra careful about it. You know, I'm a little worried, I think some of these things are definitely aimed at trying to get into Patty Stokes, Northwest Observer, hopefully get comments in there, uh, 'cause I couldn't disagree with them more, and, and in some ways, they, they definitely are defamatory, potentially actionable, but, um, I, I'm trying my best to be as nice as I can. No, I, I, I feel, I feel like this town is actually on a good course right now. This is where we are now, the administration that's being built, this is a great opportunity for Summerfield. So, if you really, it, Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to speak, I think someone was interrupting me, I don't know. If you could just watch it. Yeah? If you could just watch it.
Well, if you would please, your time for sharing is over. Please continue.
This is a great opportunity for Summerfield. So, for those folks who love Summerfield, this is one, this is a wonderful time for Ms. Rooney, I didn't realize you, you had been around so long as far as being on all the committees and doing all the things here, so thank you for your service, and I appreciate that. Mr. Brady, it sounds like you, you found some issues with the, the Board of Adjustments, and so hopefully we can, we can look into those things and talk to you about them a little more. Ms. Dunham, I think you had some concerns about participation, right? You said that, that the comprehensive plan, uh, was one of the only things the town had no real participation with. I mean, sorry, a lot of participation with, I'm sorry.
Only, only that.
Command.
I'm sorry.
That's it.
So, so, that's one of the reasons I am pushing for these town hall forums, because I think they're great. I think the opportunities for folks to come in and talk, we can put these things forward, this is what we're planning to do, this is what we're thinking about doing, and we can create that feedback loop that will allow citizens to let us know, we like it, we don't like it. Now, I think that might be scary except for some people, um, but I think it's an excellent opportunity to get, to get that out, so that people can come and let us know what exactly they want, and, and, uh, we can find ways to encourage, uh, I'm hopeful, a significant portion of the community that has not really been that involved in, in the town, to come forward and start doing those things. And, uh, Ms. Perriman, you had talked about the social media policy. Actually, one of the first things we did, uh, with the new, after the, the previous election, uh, when myself and, and Mr. Clay got on here, um, we talked about that in the first meeting, in January, February, and we were gonna do that. And of course, a lot of things have happened since then, but I actually think that's an excellent reminder for us to put the pedal to the metal and get that social media policy. And, uh, Mr. Rawlins, if you wouldn't mind making a, a note of that, because it's an excellent idea, so thank you for sharing. And, uh, last but certainly not least, uh, Mr. Stiles, man, you should be setting up here. Thank you so much for everything you've done. Uh, this gentleman went to, uh, the General Assembly, made a lot of great contacts down there, really, he was, in, in some ways, he was just a, he, he himself was an excellent lobbyist. So, I, I, I thank you, I thank you for everything you've done, hope you continue to stay involved in the town. And this town, I think we're on a great course, we're getting better, I think that you are part of that, so I hope you stay with us. That's it.
Anyone else?
I'll have some, uh, Mr. Mayor, a little bit of time for comments back. I won't go in quite in order as Mr. Hamilton did, but, uh, Ms. Perriman, uh, thank you for bringing that up, that is something that has been on the radar, the council has, has brought that up, it's our social media. I just had a conversation, uh, with our new town manager just last week, that is something that has been on the radar. Uh, he just got here, uh, but I wanted, you know, to let him know that that is something that we need to put high up, um, on the duty list. Uh, so I, I do admit that coming relatively soon. Uh, I think, I'll echo what Mr. Hamilton just said, thank you, Kyle. Uh, you have done above and beyond, we have wonderful volunteers, uh, great citizens, and you echo, uh, that definition of going to other towns, to General Assembly, uh, being a voice for our town, so thank you so much. Mr. Gray, I appreciate you coming out and, and mentioning the, uh, the thirty, thirty thousand square foot lock, um, idea that you have, and, um, I think I, I saw, uh, our mayor kind of give a nod to, to our new town managers, hey, we need to look into that, so I, I, that would be great for you, good. Um, and Ms. Rooney, uh, thank you for the history lesson. I, I, I didn't know about the, the nine month resounding, uh, wait, I said, PA, but I would love the opportunity at some point to really kind of, your history lesson.
You were there.
No, I just got here.
Had to text him and thing, you were there?
No.
You both, both of you all came and made statements about, I think it's, uh, huh?
That's alright, no, still, I, I appreciate you, you sharing that, that was great news, thank you. Uh, that's it.
Any other comments from anyone here?
I just want to thank the county for your service.
Very much so. Uh, and I would suggest that if you want defamatory to end, then let it go and move on. Mr. Windelken, for you to come up and make the statements you made, as if you're in favor of Mr. Rawlins after he emailed you and other people in this room to send prior to his arrival, uh, and then say, let's move on, is very contradictory, and that's all I'll say on that matter.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council staff?
I'd just like to, as the outgoing town manager, I'd like to thank staff for everything they did, and all the volunteers, I couldn't have done it without all of you. It would have been an impossible undertaking without everybody, so I once again want to thank staff, Jeff, uh, we've been there many late nights together at town hall, um, Rich, Scott, Brett, everybody has been so helpful, all the volunteers, we have several in this room, thank you to everybody, all the years of service, Kathy, um, I know that you've put in, um, I just wanna thank everybody, because this, this was a difficult undertaking, but, um, with your help, we got through it, and I think we did a pretty good job considering, considering everything worked out at once. So, thank you once again.
Thank you, Kathy.
And thank you, council, by the way, sorry.
I'm glad you can still laugh.
It's better than crying some days, I'll tell you.
Item number ten, business from the manager of updates, Mr. Rawlins.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council, Tublin, um, I have a few comments before I actually start my recording. It's, it is a great honor and privilege to be able to be a servant to the citizens of Summerfield. I want to promise you, the public, and the town board, that I will be open and transparent manager in all areas of the town. I will be here to listen and seek understanding of all voices. I will govern with good governance principles, free of abuse, with always a regard for the rule of the law, to have ethical and legal accountability in all things, to be a consensus builder, to be inclusive and use a strategic vision with all the town's affairs and financial resources. I know that great things happen when people come together for the benefit of the greater good. Many more great things can continue to be accomplished here in the town of Summerfield, but only if the public, the town board, and the town manager lock arms together and have a common mission, to attack the problem, not the person or persons, to have dialogue, not disagreements on the issues. I challenge each and every one of us to make our mission. In God's kingdom, it is a blessing to bring people together who are in conflict. The peacemaker initiates reconciliation when others have wronged them. So, let us all remember that blessed are the peacemakers. For tonight, uh, my report, Mr. Mayor and the town board, uh, first, uh, just give the public some background, I met with each of the council individually, one-on-one, for hour, two hours, three hours, whatever they felt like they needed, and it was very productive meeting, and they kind of set the priorities for where they want to go. One of the things that I want the public to understand is, is my job to execute the consensus of this board. It's not my job to be unilateral, it's not my job to set policies, it's not my job to set goals or visions, that's these people, they're elected by you. So, I'm just executing what they want as consensus. The first and the resounding thing that came out was Bandera. So, to give you a progress update, what I've done in the three weeks we've, that I've been here, I've met with the Piedmont Land Conservancy to get an update on the Bandera project and the upcoming trail grant application that was due today, and it was submitted for five hundred thousand dollars. We got all the applications and all the different stuff that needed to go in for that. I met with Abby Gosling, I may be mispronouncing that, of Guilford County on Bandera, Bandera and Water ARPA grant funds. Met with Trey Fouchet to get an update on the Bandera grants for LWCF and the Parpa grants, he's with NC State. Scheduled a meeting for December the fourth to get all the parties together to strategize a game plan to get Bandera finished. Confirmed attendees at this meeting will be Commissioners Clay and Devaney, Pond Engineering, Guilford County, Piedmont Land Conservancy, NC State, the town planner, the town parks and racetrack director, and the town manager. Commissioners Robinson and Doggett, and I met with Poe on Engineering and Piedmont Land Conservancy to identify some areas where we can value engineer the project to a lower cost, and that was successful. We don't have an exact number, but, um, we did make some progress with that. A and Y Trail, met with the trails and open spaces representatives to get an update. Commissioners Clay and Doggett, and I will be meeting with Kenley and Horn tomorrow to get a progress update on the A and Y Trail. Water Project, Commissioners Hamilton and Clay, and I will be meeting tomorrow with Freeze and Nichols on the water project for an update. Town Entry Sides, met with Commissioner Devaney and Citizen Priscilla Olnick concerning town sides, we are gathering costs to present to the board at your December meeting. And Mike, it is the goal of the three of us that met to do four town sides, all for under seventy-five thousand, not one, but four. I've also met with Citizen Jim Flaniken concerning the donation of property for a town side on Two Twenty South. My transition plan for the town staff is, that based on the position, there will be two weeks to a month overlap for each position. The town finance officer will have a month with our new town finance officer, and she's gonna be a consultant, um, for the town as needed, and the same for me. Uh, she's been doing a great job of that, uh, she's basically pushed me out of the nest, though. Other updates, I've toured and inspected all the town's buildings, I've found a lot of deferred maintenance, and will need attention over the next several months. Council, I'll be coming for funds. I've gained access to the Gordon House, and I'm gathering information, make a recommendation to you all as to its best use. I've attended an energy credit presentation at the Piedmont Triad Regional Council of Governments, I had lunch with the county manager, and we exchanged numbers. I've reached out to probation and parole to start the process to utilize community service workers to increase our capacity for such things as cleaning town buildings and grounds, painting, trash pickup, and trail maintenance. There's always trash to be picked up, and our town needs to stay beautiful. Maintenance has started restriping all the town's parking lots, and you'll see more of that this next month. Last weekend was the touch of truck, I think Mayor Devaney touched on that, and I will be at a strategic planning conference next week, board, with Commissioners Clay and Robinson, that the North Carolina Department of News houses will be putting them on. So, that is all I have to report, I do have two items that I would like, Mr. Mayor, uh, for new business at your pleasure.
Thank you. Any questions on items, scan A through D for a manager?
Oh, amazing on four.
Any other?
I want you to go ahead.
Any questions?
Why aren't citizens involved?
Item number eleven, business from the mayor and council, uh, committee appointments, Mr. Devaney.
Okay. I have something else to go back to after that. So, for committee appointments, um, Mr. Doggett and myself, we, um, interviewed Sonia Turner for the history committee, and we also interviewed Maria Adams for the Founder's Day Committee. And with that said, um, everybody, um, also Mark Brown, who is on both, those committees, uh, met with us as well, and he'll be, he's the chair for the district committee. And, uh, with his recommendation and our, um, we want to, um, ask that you guys approve, um, to seek both of these people. Do you, should I put this in a separate motion to recommend between the two? So, I want to make a motion that we, um, select Sonia Turner for the history committee, and her appointment would be a two-year term, starting on, and somebody's gonna have to help me since it's now a member. My two-year term dates, do we back it up to July, or do we just leave it at member? So, it'd be twenty twenty-seven?
July.
July, we do it July? So, a two-year term, so it'd end, it'd end in July twenty twenty-seven, correct? No, twenty twenty-six, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-six.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, for a discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Um, then the second person that we want to, um, admit to the Founder's Day Committee is Maria Adams, and so I'd like to make a motion that we, um, elect Maria Adams to be a member of the Founder's Day Committee, and her term would also be a two-year term, finishing up in July of twenty twenty-six.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, for a discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I have a couple more comments, please, Mr. Mayor. Um, with the, um, unfortunate recognition of Kathy, and I do appreciate your service, um, we need to vote to pull an alternate up to the planning board, and so that would be Kyle Stiles. Um, he said it's, he is seated as an alternate right now, so I would like to make a motion that we elect Kyle Stiles to be a board member of the planning board. And that's a two-year seat as well. So, three? Okay, I can't see. So, I have a motion, something to make.
I'm not sure that it's, 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 it's three years.
So, that would be July twenty twenty-seven.
Mr. voter, you know if that's correct?
We've, if, we confirm, Mr. Gray.
I'm very much a member of Stiles taking Kathy's place, but a big appropriate thing to do is to have it, have him fill her.
Her term.
Her term that expires in July of next year, and then appoint him again, worth a three-year term after that time. That keeps it a running, we've had the same number of people, but they just melt every year.
Okay.
Absolutely right.
So, I'll amend my motion that, um, Mr. Stiles will fulfill Ms. Rooney's, um, tenure, her term, until next July, that would be of twenty twenty-five, and then we will bring Mr. Stiles back to the election table at that time.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, for a discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and motion carries.
Now, with all that said, um, we, um, are looking and have open positions for alternates on the Board of Adjustments and also on the Planning Board. We usually try to keep, um, or in the past, we kept two to three on the, um, Planning Board and the Board of Adjustments, it, it really varies, that was not elected there, but I encourage citizens to step up, it's a new time, bring your talents to the table and share with us. Um, I think that's it. Mr. Doggett, do you have anything to add? Um, since it says, uh, mayor and council, business from mayor and council, um, I wanted to bring up just a couple of other things. Thank you for talking about what town's on, Mr. Twigg. I was just, I was, I can't give you a nickname.
I think you deserve your nickname.
It's official.
And she said you guys earlier, so I'm rubbing off on her.
Yeah. Um, also, um, and this was, um, Mr. Rawlins, or Mr. Manager's, uh, idea was to get decals, um, on all the town vehicles, that makes them look official and that type of thing, but I believe you said that we had to decide if we would want the seal or the, the script wording. So, I don't know if that, that's the time to do it, but I thought while we're in the process of making things more beautiful, straightening things up, let, let's, let's get it going.
Yes, ma'am. So. I would say on that, um, we used to have, uh, at the bottom of the business for the mayor and council, there was always the last one of those with the opportunity to have new business, and then at the end, there was also the other business number thirteen, so if, if we, uh, we can put that one, we may need to put that one back in, just so we have it there.
Yes, sir.
But we'll, I mean, we'll move forward.
Uh, yes, madam mayor, pretend. Uh, we'd like the council's direction, we have the obvious town seal that looks like this, but a lot of our town, uh, things that I've observed has the Beaufort, and just says the town of Summerfield, and so before I went off to spend any money, I wanted to get the town, council's consensus and pleasure of which one you prefer to be on town property. Um, so, that was the purpose of, of stalling that until tonight.
I like the wording, town of Summerfield, I think it's easy to read and understand, and you don't have to try to figure out what it is. My thing.
I agree.
I agree.
Yep, does he need a motion?
That's a, that's a consensus, I'm, 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 I'm.
I, I don't need a motion, just wanted your feedback.
Okay, but that town, Summerfield, make it easier for you to read them just a little more.
Since we're making an exception for new business, you have those two items, you wanna bring up now, or you wanna wait?
Whatever you're good with. Yeah, if it's your pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the first thing is, is that, uh, I talked with some of the council this weekend about the upcoming Christmas tree lighting, and, um, in my research, I found that we're spending anywhere from seven hundred and fifty bucks to a quota fifteen hundred dollars to get our Christmas tree up for the lighting. I personally don't think that that's being a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars. Uh, one of the things that many towns have done, that they went ahead and bought a tree that's pre-lit, it just needs to be put together by maintenance, um, so, uh, at the direction of a couple of the council, uh, I've got three quotes for, for the, one of these trees. Now, uh, the town of Nash in Edgcombe County has had that same tree since nineteen ninety-two, so the return on investment would be quickly realized, um, with that. So, I got three quotes according to the purchasing policy today, um, the first one was for twenty thousand dollars, the second one was for seventy-five hundred dollars, um, but it did not, um, have everything on it, and the third one was from an in-state firm that was seventy-one hundred dollars, um, and so if it's the pleasure of the board and you authorize, I can get this ordered tomorrow, and we can use it at our tree lighting this year, we won't have to rent skyjacks from now on, we won't have to pay separate companies, we'll have our own tree, it has LED lighting, it has a star on top of it, and it's fourteen foot tall, and we will have it forever. The current tree out there is kind of looking Charlie Brownish, uh, at the park, so, um, that would be the first order of business, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring before the board. And I apologize for late, but this talk just came to, this issue just came up this last weekend at Touch a Truck, as I talked to the individual council members, I did not talk to them as a group, to clarify, um, I am very well of the meeting's laws, um, and, uh, so that would be what I would present for the first time.
That's fine, thank you. Further discussion on that?
Do you have a reference for which one? Maybe it'd be, uh, those three?
The lowest responsible bidder is the legislative term. Uh, the lowest responsible bidder is the lowest bidder, I've, I've worked with this company, actually, in my last town, bought a tree from this company, they come with very good references, they are North Carolina-based, the other two are not. The twenty thousand dollar one, believe it or not, was Walmart. Unbelievable, but, um, and the other one was an out-of-state firm, but, uh...
But these are not your typical artificial trees, uh, at seven thousand dollars, are they, are they gold, metal?
They're built out of metal rings, they have a ten-foot base, they're fourteen foot tall, and they would have a star on top of them, so the purpose of having a tree light and have illuminated tree on Two Twenty, it would more than accomplish that. Uh, but currently, we're spending seven hundred and fifty dollars a year, at a minimum, just to put up Christmas tree lights to take them back down.
Do we have this, this, a, a good storage location?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we have the staff that can.
Yes, sir.
Call it every year?
In fact, they would come on site and help train the staff to put it up before the Christmas tree lighting, they confirm that, um, and, um, train the staff to be able to take it down.
If I missed it, forgive me, did you say, uh, the life of these, how long do they are they good for?
At least twenty years. There are towns in North Carolina that have it since the early nineties. So, it'd be a good investment, especially for the law problem. They're LED lighting, multicolored.
Is there a warranty related to these?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussions, someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion, authorize them to buy a tree?
I'll second.
That's seven one.
Yes.
Seven one.
Yes.
Have a motion, a second, for a discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Yes, sir, actually had a third one. Uh, the, the, the second one has to do with the Christmas tree lighting, and again, being a good steward of our taxpayers' dollars, we've in the past, Mr. Mayor and board, used Chick-fil-A, and I know that's tradition, uh, however... However, Chick-fil-A is not in the town limits of Summerfield. They don't pay property tax, they don't pay sales tax. I think it's really important to support local businesses that support the citizens in this council. So I would propose that we change the menu, and I really just need a consensus on this from y'all, to pizza. And we would still use the jump and bean for hot chocolate, but we can feed pizza, we can support a local business, and we're gonna save about four to five hundred dollars a year by buying pizza. It's a whole lot easier for kids, too. So that is my proposal, and I would just like a general consensus from the board that they're okay with that, as I'm new here, and I don't want to break your good dishes.
Change is okay.
And this would be dominance?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion?
Sounds good.
The last item, Mr. Mayor, two, or three?
Well, I thought.
Okay, that's four, okay, good.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me, the last thing is, is you did mention that we have new business with the plaque today, that was a really nice event at the Martin House. And I'm really a proponent for supporting local business where we can. We can't always do that, but I envision there's going to be a parking challenge with that business and with the new hardware store. And I would propose, if it's okay to the board, that you allow me to sign a memorandum of understanding that the, forgive me, the name of the old hardware store and the Martin House be able to utilize the town gas parking lot, which we just restrike for patrons as overflow. Certainly, if we have town business, they understood that, you know, we'd have to let them know that it would be available, but, so my proposal is, is for the board to authorize me to sign a memorandum of understanding with them to allow them to use that parking lot.
Yeah, ask a question, please.
Yes, ma'am, Madam, of course.
Is there a way, I'm just thinking about safety. Is there a way to get DOT to strike something? Or can we do that? Does it have to be DOT, just so drivers, because they try to get through there pretty quick? And there's big trucks coming through, I just don't want an accident to happen.
That is an awesome question. It was a discussion earlier today, because we all, we have all state-maintained roads, we have to get permission from DOT, but we need crosswalks on all four corners. And there's some other concerns with DOT stuff. I would love for the public, if you have some, to please call me at town hall, meet with me, so I can take a list, plan on a meeting with the district engineer. Somebody had mentioned down on Strawberry Road near 220 today, I think councilman Hamilton mentioned that to me. So we have some area concerns, I'd like to take a package to them and address them so we have a safer town.
Sure, your man, thanks, counsel. It sounds like a very nice idea, but should we put that in the agenda so that there is a concern from the public or anything that there's time to voice up? I mean, is there any precedent you need to do at this meeting, or can we put it on the dinner for next time?
Yes, sir, whatever your pleasure is, if you'd like to get public, get put.
Like have.
Just to make sure, and maybe to just run a few of the legal questions by, because I didn't even think, I didn't even think about what Lynn said, so, you know, that poses a couple of questions, too, just to make sure that we've crossed our T's and dotted our I's.
I don't think it's a bad idea. I definitely want to support local business, especially one across the street. I think you bring up a good point, is there some risk or some things, you know, galley we want to work through on safety and?
We had talked about with the Gordon Hardware Building, and if there was going to be some type of pub at one time, the concern of people drinking and crossing that road. And so if the Martin, Mergatow is gonna have wine, I don't know if that's just selling closed bottles of wine, or if people are actually going to be consuming on site, but I would have concerns with them crossing those roads if there's.
Yeah, we turned that project down, we tried to.
We, yeah.
We didn't, we liable to, yeah, happens in our parking lot.
Still, it's a good idea, I think. Whatever your pleasure is.
One more thing, when we meet with the DOT people, we want to have a half a sign, one of our four signs down at the, on what, fifty, close to, there's a memorial there. There's a boys' couple, we were talking about, on Mr. Oakridge, the people boy, okay. So you can stop that in there when you want to.
And forgive me if I misunderstood you, I thought Councilman Hamilton was saying too, can we table the issue about memorandum of understanding of the parking lot? But not only that, advertise for comments from the public for other DOT concerns in the entire town.
Yeah, but we need the sign thing before December. We need the, we need the sign, we need DOT to tell us if we can put a sign there on that property before December, because we're trying to do the culmination of four signs before then, so we can start getting that hammered out.
Mr. Mayor, I had some questions, but it doesn't have to be at eleven, it can wait until thirteen other business, if you want.
Okay. Anything else someone like to make a motion to, recess, close session?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one question? Sometimes we do do the business before, so that if there's nothing to come back to, our guests may we do to do that, or keep starting as is.
I'm fine putting new business and other business in the future there, and certainly I want to do it, but you have to have an opportunity for other businessmen to come back to close session, because if you do something and they, then you have to make a public to take a vote on, you have to come back out and do it. There may always be more business you have to come back and address. So I'll leave it up to you, if you'd like to do it, but certainly we can do it here, if not, we can do it again.
And there's already been a agenda. My question is really just for Ms. Luther, and kind of for Chris, for Twig, too. And then my other business will be over, thank you for giving me a call to that, too, Mayor. We've worked really hard with you and tried to support you during this time. Thank you again, Ms. Luther. And I know that you said you gave a long list of to-dos to our new incoming manager. I'm just kind of curious, sort of a, if you could entertain me just a little state of the union, or maybe some lessons learned, or, you know, what, as new council, new coming in, were there things that, you know, we could have benefited or learned from? So my first question, and you can be brief, and this, again, this is public, so careful what you might say. What was your biggest challenge within the first few weeks as you moved in as town manager? Or interim town manager?
I would, I would say the biggest challenge was probably getting access to certain things. Trying to be, like I said, unfortunately, I try to, I try to just state the facts, but it gets twisted when it gets reported, so I'm trying to be as polite as I can. Trying to, being provided with access to, and passwords for the things that I guess were necessary to conduct town business. I would say that was probably the biggest obstacle. And unfortunately, we're still working through some of that. As we talked about tonight, we're streaming, because we're on YouTube, and one of the issues was we don't have complete control over the Facebook. And even though the media reported that Jeff and I didn't know how to stream, it was more than that, it was a matter of not having the capabilities to do what we needed to. In this day and age, unfortunately, a lot of things are tied to your personal cell phone, and it makes it difficult when people leave to change things over, it's a lot of work. And there are also some obstacles, especially with places like Facebook, where you can't get a person on the phone if you try to call and so forth. So I'd say that was probably the biggest obstacle, is not having the passwords provided to me and the access that I needed, and still trying to overcome some of that.
And you're still trying.
Yes, unfortunately.
Were there any missed opportunities or things that, that we could have done better, or the council processed that, any other sort of?
I would say an exit strategy, maybe, if you want to word it that way, for your town manager for the future. I think that you need processes and procedures in place when you go from one to the next, so that we don't encounter items that were encountered. Twig made some great recommendations regarding that. And, and that's one of the things that he's already trying to implement, and that we will work towards consolidating a lot of that. But there should have been a better exit strategy and actually statutorily required positions in place when I arrived. That would have helped.
Did you find that the previous administration was helpful in facilitating the change?
I worked closely with the finance officer, and she was very forthcoming. And she tried to provide all the information that she could provide in such a limited time. It would have been nicer to have a longer transition, and I know there were complications with that. She was, she, she tried to give me as much information as she could in a little time, but there was also a lot that, for lack of information, that we did not have. And it's not something where you're gonna constantly call the ex-employees with a question nonstop all day, that's not something you'll do. So unfortunately, things got misrepresented online, on social media and the press, that we were slamming former staff when it was a matter of we didn't have information, so there was no way for us to know, certain things.
Is it appropriate to say fake news?
Well, you know, I, yeah, I, just to tell you, years ago, I almost came to a meeting with one of those buttons on, just to tell you, yes, yes. And, and just to clarify on that as well, there's not enough hours in the day to fight that. There are a lot, there are a lot of things that have been said and put on social media and written, and it's false, and I would have liked to have fought back against it, but there aren't enough hours in the day. My main priority was getting the stuff done for the town, and I had to let that go, you know. As anybody who is in town government, you know you're gonna get attacked, whether it's true or not, and you just have to pick skin, yes, it bothers you, of course it bothers you, but you have to just move on.
You did a great job. Not, not one of my major questions is going to ask, but I'll piggyback off of what Mr. Hamilton just said. You only mentioned the prior finance officer, did you have the opportunity, did you coordinate with prior town manager to get all the things that you need?
The first day, I met with him shortly, but then he was coordinating with the IT people, so I didn't have a whole lot of interaction with them.
Were you allowed to be with the, in that coordination with that people, or you separated?
That was done independent of me. I was left with the finance officer for the transition, who was trying to provide me with as much as she could about everything. And, you know, I had pages and pages and pages of notes, but.
Do we still not have access to the hard drive, this hard drive?
We, we finally got access to everything, and it's only been a little over a month, Jeff, when we got access to the final stuff that was locked to us, correct?
Yes.
So we finally have access to everything now. Now, in terms of, like usability, for instance, Facebook, they have controls in place that are hard to overcome, and, and without the original person who set it up, it's hard to get access to everything that we need. So that's, that's been a little bit of a dilemma.
You mentioned the, sort of the access, the passwords, some challenges already, what? Maybe this is more so for Twig to understand, and maybe you two have already had this conversation, but what was the biggest challenge that you had to overcome, and what did you get overcoming? Was it still that, the access, or was it something more?
I think a lot of it was access, but lack, lack, lack of information, maybe. Luckily, I had the historical knowledge that helped me get where I needed to go, or helped fill in the gaps for staff when they had a question. So I knew how things happened before, and still you were able to work through some issues, but.
Sounds like you were a perfect choice there for a while.
I don't know about that, but it helped, the historical knowledge did help.
Last question I have, Mr. Mayor.
This is neither new business or other business or on the agenda, so, I mean.
Am I allowed to ask one last question?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Was there any advice that you could give the council, or to the town manager, as you exit from finance or, and run against town manager?
I've given him a lot of advice already, but. I think the main advice was, well, pretty much to do what's best for the town, don't get into the politics. I'm not a political person, I hate politics, I just, you know, my, I had to, I have to, as town manager, I had to separate my citizen hat from my town manager hat. And I had to make decisions based on what the council wanted, what the council needed, and what the town needed. And that is what the town manager needs to do, is make decisions what's best for the town and stay out of the politics of it, and live in what's best for the town.
Appreciate you, ma'am, thank you.
Anyone like to make a motion, recess, to close session?
I'm sure that we, going to close session to consult and determine employee retention of the public body in order to preserve the change of property which is provided under North Carolina General Statute 143-1811A3, to address the amount of compensation and material terms of employment contract, to instruct staff and agent agents concerning the price of material terms concerning the property as provided under NCGS 143-1811A5, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear investigative complaint, charge agreements by or against individual public officer or employee under NCGS 143-1811A6.
Motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, for a discussion. Stand adjourned for a moment, although you could not be here, will come back out. Thank you for being here tonight.